Let's show her, typical Johnson. Okay. Yes, we're ready, Mr. Rossy.
Reconstituted council, now that we're out of recess, the first order of business, and that's why the city clerk is here, is to the selection of a mayor and a mayor of both towns. With that, I will turn it over to the ladies.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Now we'll get to nominate a mayor. I'm going to call for nominations from the city council. Do we have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Mayor Tippa Pepper.
Do we have any more nominations from the floor?
I'd like to second that.
All right then. Can we have a vote, please?
Sweet way in.
Senator is yes.
Towards the middle. That's on center.
Towards me.
Oh, there you go.
No, not that one.
Not that one, sorry.
You can't respond after the nomination.
I hit the fire on my first day.
Nancy, 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 Nancy. Well, I've seen that look, but we've captured it.
Okay, there was a vote of five zero, and our new mayor is there.
Thank you, everybody, I appreciate that. Thank you, council, for your trust in me. I do appreciate that, and I will not fail you. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Selection of Mayor Foughtown.
It's Mayor Foughtown. Do we have a nomination for Mayor Foughtown?
I nominate for Crosby.
Second?
I'll second that.
Vote, please. You can get it. There, here we go. Congratulations, Mr. Rossy.
Give her a message first.
We're at announcements, aren't we?
No, we're actually comments of the council.
Oh, I'm sorry, comments for incoming council members and mayor. Mr. Cashia Palguita, would you like to?
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. I won't make too long, it's going to get hot in here, but I would first like to thank God for giving me the opportunity to continue my service. I grew up in the city. My father, that was just here to tell you, when I first came into the city, we went to where Amber Rich was. The apartment used to be called Family Tree. We started there. It's amazing how my life became a full circle. I will continue to do good. I'm a commissioned officer in the United States Army, all that is close and dear to my heart. I want to thank my wife, who always been there for me since day one. I've always put her through so much, through wars and back and forth. My wife stood strong, and I appreciate you, and I thank you. I thank my children, my family, and my friends. I will never fail you. I will always do what's right, and I always will do good. I always have people watching me. I have my mom watching me from head to toe. So I know she'll do something to me. I wish you could be here today, but I know when you're in the hands of our Lord, I'm forever faithful. So I thank you, please give me the opportunity to serve you. Please give me that chance, and I will show you what we can do. I just want to make this city the best I can. So, thank you so much. And with that, I'd like to give my lovely wife, Nancy, which I thank you very much.
It'll now be known as Cash. Thank you, Cash.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Johnson.
Déjà vu. I think I've been here before. I really would like to thank all of the supporters who helped me get elected this time. I really need to thank my family, my lovely wife Lori, my son Trevor, Stephanie, and Kenny. I appreciate everything that you've done to help me get here. Again, there's so much more as far as the people that endorsed my campaign. I appreciate everything that everybody has done. And Lori, you twisted my arm to come here.
Thank you.
Everyone heard you complaining about the car being sorry and that stuff, okay? I love you, and I've got some flowers for you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I guess it's my turn. I want to thank my wife without... Did you lose his earring, honey? I thought it was bigger, I'm sorry. First of all, I want to thank my wife and my family that with me doing this, always asking me, "Why are you doing this again?" And I said, "Well, I'm not done yet." So, number two, I want to thank all of my supporters, and that's across the board. And many of you are here right now. Thank you all for supporting me. Thank you for the other individuals, my other council members that supported me also, Cash and Steve Johnson, and all the families. And I will not disappoint any of you, and we will work well as a team, and we will unite and do good things for the city. And the most important thing is making sure that our residents are heard, and making sure that we treat everyone fairly, and work well with our employees, which we do have, as Mr. Davis states, some great employees in the city. Very proud of that. And our outgoing city manager, we make a great team. It's not always perfect. Life is not perfect, but when you turn at an angle that you can't get to, you must turn around and find another direction, and we've done that. So, our city's healthier. But again, I thank my wife, my children. Nick is here, Kristen, Bodie, my grandson, Ruben, my son-in-law. I've got Shannon, my new daughter-want-to-be, thank God. If I could just kick the neck without getting hip surgeries, but other than that, we're good. But Starks, Andersons, Barry, Kathy and Joe, the Fots, the Johnsons, you name it, all these people in this crowd, the Fords, I'm missing people, but thank you all very much. And I promise you, I will not fail you. We will not fail you. So, and that, Patty, I have some flowers. I have a bigger earring. This is what they're talking about when you have to read. This is really fun reading on Saturday morning, with your dog sitting on the couch next to you and you have your third cup of coffee. Now, Mr. Rossy, we are at... Oh, announcements, I'm sorry. Do we have announcements right now? Announcements not... Yes? Please come on.
I'm part of my local press, I'm kind of adopted and raised in Laverne, because of Hillcrest, and I fell in love with the town. And I really wanted to thank the city council members, and I have thanked the other two, but... But I wanted to share with you a project that I've been involved with for probably seven or eight years, starting out telling the story of Laverne, and emphasizing older adults, our elders, telling a story through the focus of transportation, how it's through in the city, community service, commerce, education, all of the things that make up the city. And we had a, like a museum quality in rainbow colors for our third graders in our school district, and they came over to Hillcrest to see it and hear the storyteller. That became impossible with COVID. And my concern was, how are we going to continue to tell the story of Laverne to our children? So that they know all of the elements that went into making this city, the people that worked hard to make the city what it is, and for them to grow with respect and appreciation for their city and understand that they have a responsibility to serve their community, as you have done. And we decided to do a video, and so each one of the elements, transportation, community service, and so forth, were done in a video with an elder telling their story and their experience with that element. And it was accepted by the school district, and our third graders saw it this spring. And we would like to see the eight elements, which included Charlotte Gonzalez telling about being an adopted son. It's on the history...
It's on our website under, I think it's our events and podcasts page.
And by her possessing that, you know she's talking about the historical society.
Because I own it.
So, if you're interested in seeing that. What I'm giving you tonight, in appreciation for your service, is a handbook that we put together for teachers. Obviously, you're not going to be teaching the class or showing the video, but what it has in it is for each one of those elements is a historical outline from the early 1800s to the present, in small paragraphs. And to get a bunch of PhDs to do small paragraphs, who's there? So, anyway, for each one of you, thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. I heard this is pretty incredible. If anybody gets a chance to go online, this is pretty amazing. It's got some major, major stuff in our community, and it's done very well. So if you get a chance, please go online and check this out. Thank you very much.
The other thing that I wanted to share with you, you think I'll never leave, but you've had hours here, so...
You have all this time, you have, please. Are you done?
As you probably know, because we've announced it before, Hillcrest's been very involved in DEI activities, really working toward diversity and inclusion. And we have a welcome room that we change every three months, focusing on a group that maybe is not as well-known to the majority as others, sometimes it's the majority. Right now, the gallery is going along with the welcome room, and we're proud to announce the Splendor of Asia, an inspiring exhibit highlighting the vast cultural and religious art of Asia. And we'd like you to come and experience the brilliant and colorful array of Asian art and artifacts on loan from the Cultural Natural History Collection at the University of Laverne. We are so grateful to them. And to two private individuals, June Palti and Kent Badger, who have absolutely glorious collections of their own, so they're all an exhibit, have a flyer for each of you. And we do have a reception that I'll come and remind you about in August, August 25th. I'm probably not obeying protocol here.
You're doing just fine.
So anyway, we'd love to have you kind of see it. I'm very proud of it. And I think our reception will be special. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sherry?
Yeah, this is where I ask for money.
Look, you chased them off with saying that, Sherry.
Yeah, they're all leaving.
You can make a contribution to the truck.
Did you happen to see the cash I had on the counter here, Sherry? I know that you're eyeing it all night long.
All gracefully accepted.
I just, but it's a wonderful cause, and that truck is coming along. They just need money to finish it.
It is, and in fact, this Saturday, because not all of you have got to go right up next to the truck here inside, find out what was going on with it, and where we spent the money. But this Saturday from 10 until noon, you're welcome to come over to my house and take a look at the truck up close and personal, and hear from the project director, who will explain to you in excruciating detail all of the mechanical modifications we've made to the truck. It really is in wonderful shape. We are a little more than halfway there with all of the fundraising and the spending of money and the rest of it. And I will tell you that we would have been probably financially much better off if we had bought a new truck than if we were fixing this truck. But it is the heart and soul of old Laverne. So do come to our open house and meet the International, which will be in my driveway. It will then go back to Old Anvil Speed Shop, have some more work done on it, and then it'll arrive back at the Benita High School Auto Shop, where one of the advanced auto shop classes will finish it up. And at that point in time, then I've got to go to the DMV and activate our license, and after that, insurance. So the costs are never-ending when you own a vehicle, as you all know. And so come take a look, come have a fun time, have some lemonade and some brownie bites, and meet the truck. So we were thrilled to introduce it to you on the Fourth of July, but now you can get a closer peek. So our Save the Truck flyers are up front, and our flyers for this Saturday's event are up front. Help yourselves, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Sherry. George, thanks.
Not today.
Nothing on the library? George, seriously. Anybody else for announcements? There's both of them.
Many of you may not know that there's still a potential for Camp Akravon Page to come back to be utilized for these 707 juvenile offenders. The discussion has been taking place the last few meetings with the Studio Santa Correa lawsuit. They're trying to think of alternatives if that lawsuit, if they get an injunction, where are they going to put the kids in the interim? And so Camp Akravon Page is definitely back on the table. I don't know at what level, because they're still dealing with a labor dispute for the probation department. But the fact that it's being mentioned is something that needs to be put back on the radar for both the city and the residents. So if you'd like to participate in those meetings, you can email them at info@elliecounty.gov. And I'm sure that the city has the information and can repost it on their website to help the residents get involved again. And as you know, many of us did, and I think that's what helped our cause. So I'm asking that the city and the residents help that again. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. That's, we will search that and find out which one you want. Yeah, we'll check with the supervisors to make sure, and we must come around on the ball at all times. Thank you, I really appreciate you being on there, because you've been steadfast on that, so. Anyone else? Mr. Rossy?
Yes, our Laverne Lilly has done some exceptional things this past week with our senior boys winning state, and our girls, back-to-back champions as well. They're trying to collect money, and a GoFundMe page go on to the Laverne Lilly website to help them out. The girls were selling back-to-back shirts and to help raise some money. And last year, Laverne really got around the group and helped them get to the place they need to go to. This year, they're thinking, "Oh, my gosh, this happens every year." No, it doesn't. So we got to make sure and get our kids there. And, you know, talking to the head of the Laverne Lilly, our girls softball has a really, really good chance to make the World Series this year. So their games, the girls have a Sunday, Sunday at 4:00, and...
At San Bernardino, right?
In San Bernardino. So make sure, try to support any which way you can. The boys, senior boys are talking about even maybe being on ESPN.
Friday at 10:00 a.m. on ESPN.
They said ESPN for sure.
Yes.
About the GoFundMe, the last time I looked on the girls, they were trying to raise 8,000, they had two, that was a few days ago, and the boys are three, and they want to go 10. So, I mean, 10 bucks, I mean, and $5 for the fee, I mean, that's nothing. So whatever people can do, it'd be great to assist them. We've just got unbelievable support.
And these teams lead into what we honor tonight of the girls high school softball team, too. These kids are going into their next list, keep it going.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll move to item 12, consent calendar, Mr. Rossy. Do we have anything pulled?
We do not.
Then are there any discussions on the council as far as the consent calendar? If not, I'll set the motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second?
I'll second it.
Vote, please. Thank you very much. Now we move to item 13, public hearing. Is that correct, Mr. Rossy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I will be taking majority, actually, on these items. The first public hearing is an amendment to the fee resolution. As council will recall, back in May, we bring a fee schedule to you every year to update our fees to reflect current costs associated with certain items. At that time, we were still working through the contract for our outside firing sector, and so we did not have what the actual rates would be. We have now completed that agreement, and so we're bringing back an amendment to the fee resolution to incorporate those changes going forward. Since we contracted out to a third party, it's basically the direct costs to the city that are being asked to be captured in those fees. So with that, I ask council to, if they have any questions, otherwise open up a public hearing and accept staff's recommendations to the fee resolution.
Any questions for staff, or for public comment? We'll open up public comment. Do you have any public comment on this item? There are nothing on that. Everybody's energized right now, they're exhausted. We'll go out of public comment and up to the dais. So we have any comments from council on this item? I do have one comment. I just want to say thank you. I really appreciate Chief, Megan, and staff for bringing up these resolutions. Well, I don't want to tax everyone to death in our community, but we have to be up to par with what our fees cost and what people have to pay, and outside people have to pay, and this will bring us up to par with what we need to do. And I really do appreciate that, because every cent that we make and every cent that we can capture is that much more to fund our beautiful city, and making sure our residents have the great services that they have. So, thank you, chief and staff. I read through these with a smile on my face, thinking, okay, we're up to speed, and thank you, Mr. Rossy, for having great staff and letting them do their job. So with that, I need a motion.
This is 13A.
This is 13A. Second?
I'll second it.
Vote, please.
Thank you, welcome, carries. Mr. Ross, if we go to item B? And we can do, item B, we've, Mr...
So what I will do is, we're going to take these kind of in a global together.
And then I'll do the ones that Mr. Cashia Palguita has to leave. Yes, or better known as Cash.
So I will just explain the overarching concept of what this is, and then we'll take the two, and then we will excuse Councilman Cash, and then move on. So the landscape districts, there are certain segments, areas of the community that have landscape districts that are set up where the individual property owners are charged on their property tax for the work that is being done. That goes about with, consistent with state law, that these particular areas are of benefit and are determined to those individual residences. And so what is required is that the city basically maintains those, but the charges are applied to the benefited properties, and then it's put on the property tax. What's required is that every year, you hold a public hearing that allow those residents, if interested, to assess the charges. The engineer has determined the charges that need to be applied. They can only be raised by a certain percentage, and the percentages that are being recommended in, I think it is just in District 7, is what's allowed under the, the articles in Corporation. I'll describe it. So for District 7 and District 8, we are recommending approval of those open hearings, and then approval of those. District 8 does not have any proposed increase in their charges. Once the public hearing is closed, we will then pass the information on to the county, which will then cause these to be added to the upcoming act.
Mr. Ross, here, this typically a homeowners association where...
Not homeowners association. These are individual, single-family residents that are being assessed, so it's on their individual property tax.
So it's on their individual property tax. Are they noticed of this specifically? Or is it just the normal agenda that goes?
No, this public hearing, they were noticed of these changes that would be proposed.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions for staff? We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody wish to comment on this public hearing, on these items 7 and 8? We're not seeing none, and nothing on the closed public hearing. Bring it back to the dais. Not any for the discussion. Do we have a motion for items 7 and 8?
Yes.
Please.
So move to approve District Number 7 and 8, the special zones in District Number 7 and 8.
Second?
Second.
Vote, please. Motion carries. We'll wait and hold for... There we go. Okay, Mr. Rossy, so we have to, on the next one, Mr. Cash will have to leave, is that correct?
So the next two, and on the next item that is on other matters, due to where Councilman Cash lives, these affect his individual property, so he will have to accuse himself from the vote on this.
We'll call you back in four hours. Just, hey, put the pizza in, would you?
You guys, they're rolling in there?
Yes, that's fine.
Before we proceed, I just wanted to confirm one thing with the fire tax resolution. I own an office on Elm Highway. Am I subject to this inspection, or inspection fee? Should I have declared conflict? Can I... So this was about inspections when we're doing new buildings.
New building?
Yes, yeah. This is, or we're doing reconstruction or something like that, for third-party contractor relative to that.
So make it clear, no.
No, no.
And we'll open up public comment? Oh, no, you got to explain.
Yeah, just explain briefly about these. So these are the other two areas. District 6 is comprised of various areas throughout the community. There's one on First and Fulton. There's another on Wheeler and Tabor. There's another one in North Laverne. There's Live Oak. There's Laverne Business Park and Amherst and Brew. These are all different zones within District 6. And one of those happens to be the district that Councilman Cash has a residence in, so it's subject to him. That's why he cannot participate. The second is 84-1, which is the Esperanza Slope, which is the maintenance of that slope for fuel management on an annual basis. So these two are both before you for consideration. The only one in District 6 that is being considered for an increase in the levy is that of, not five, I'm sorry, in District 6, which is proposed for an eight-and-a-half percent increase, which is still within the allowable increase, but less than the maximum that's permitted.
Okay. We're going to, any questions for staff on these before we go to public comment? We're gonna, any questions for staff on these before we go to public comment? Any public, are we gonna open up the public comment? Any public comment? Don't be so excited, I know these are really exciting.
I'm not understanding District Six. Is it something else we're talking about?
It's just basically the lighting landscape districts we're talking about.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's just...
I was like, what?
Yes, we've removed your home.
Yeah.
We added it. It will be in Pam's backyard.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so being there, no other further comment, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any other comment from council? I think a motion.
I'd like to approve Resolution twenty-two dash fifty-five and twenty-two dash fifteen, the special zones in District Six and eighty-four dash M.
Eighty-four one dash M.
Eighty-four one, sorry. Eight-hundred forty-one dash M.
I'll second.
Vote please. Motion carries. Mr. Russi, next in line.
Okay, the next item we have before you is our annual re-debating clearance charges. And again, because the charges in, Councilman Cash, I'm gonna get this right, are affected, it does have a financial effect on him. So as such, he has to recuse himself. And I will say that we have the county inspector that is available, should there be any questions. But essentially, this process started back in March with the city notifying the residents. There are basically a hundred-plus properties that are on our list that are for at least review for inspection. We then go through a process of determining with the county inspector, as well as our fire department, if there is a actual inspection, because there are potential for weeds there, then individuals are given the opportunity to cure them themselves. There were a total of eighty-one properties that were, where actual inspections were required, and only two of those required the county to go on and do work. They still are required to have this, these charges attached to their property tax, so that is the reason that you're holding this meeting tonight. The affected residents have been noticed as well, and remain aware of this action being considered to be.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? You okay?
Yeah.
We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Just vote down.
I don't know if this is a question directed to council or Chief Nig, but Mr. Russi, seeing that the residents have been notified, does that include the owner of Sierra Laverne Golf Course?
That's your only question.
Yeah, it's just a quick question, and then I have a follow-up question as well.
Go ahead. Yes, they have.
They have been, okay. Because I know that there have been numerous meetings that the residents have brought that up, and it just doesn't seem like anything has been addressed, and we all know what it looks like. So my second question is, is there any kind of a chart or some kind of statistics showing that the amount that is collected, how that money is utilized? Is it strictly for fire department services, or does it go to the city? Or how it's up to those levies or fines in answer to the city? There are just two questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
So county inspector, they have their henry, so I'll let them come in, and then I'll answer the other question.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. So regarding the Sierra Laverne Golf Course, I am in constant communication with the manager, Rick Adams. They have gone ahead and cleared the immediate hazard images, the weeds throughout the golf course. I'm currently working with him in removing all the downed trees. So as far as the big parcel, there's about maybe six to seven downed trees with the two-hundred feet fire clearance as required. So they have actually until July twenty-seventh to make that clearance, otherwise the county will go and do it for them.
What, you're... Twenty-seven, if they don't respond, then the county steps in. Good enough. Good enough. Thank you.
To answer the other question, the charges that are listed on here are actually the charges that are incurred by the county to do the work. So what is being assessed on the residents is for, and it's only those two properties, is for the county to actually go out there and do the work. So it's the county getting reimbursed for their expenses to do whatever clearing was necessary. They were given a certain period of time to do it on their own, should they not, and the county steps in, and this, in this case, that's what they're not. It's not necessarily a penalty. Some individuals choose to let the county do it because they have the equipment to do it, or it might be more cost-effective. So not necessarily considered as a penalty, just a way that they choose to let it happen.
Thank you.
Any other, um, public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, bring it to the dais. Any other comments? I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve the re-debating charges.
Second?
I'll second.
Vote please. Motion carries, hold it. There we go. Motion carries. Okay, our next item, the item B, employment agreements for interim city manager and interim senior, equipment mechanic prescription number twenty-two fifty-nine, resolution twenty-two sixteen.
I'll take that one, Mr. Mayor.
It's all yours, JR, Assistant City Manager for the O.A.
Thank you. You might remember those that we seated on council, that we actually did a couple of these retired new tenant agreements at the last council meeting. For your consideration this evening, I have two additional retired new tenant agreements and associated resolutions due to pending retirement and the recent vacancy that we had in our fleet division. All documents and agreements have been shared with CalPERS to ensure performance with applicable government code and CalPERS requirements. The first appointment is the result of city manager Bob Russi pending retirement, based on unanimous direction from the city council just up as being identified as a highly qualified retired new tenant, having served as city manager prior to his retirement, as well as several interim retired new tenant assignments for other agencies. The second appointment is a result of a vacancy after the city's tenured senior equipment mechanic, who specialized in working on our heavy equipment, such as fire apparatus, left for another agency. Stuart Havlicek has over thirty years of experience providing professional mechanic services to Southern California communities, including as a heavy equipment operator for La Habra and Berea, and was also a senior apparatus technician for the Orange County Fire Authority. Both agreements will be limited to a maximum of nine-hundred-sixty hours and will ultimately result in cost savings as the retired new tenants are not eligible to receive any benefits other than their hourly rate. Staff recommends the city council approve the attached resolutions authorizing the city manager to execute agreements with Ches Duff and Stuart Havlicek to provide temporary part-time employment. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
I just, I'm sorry, just want to make sure that our new council members, they have met the proposed interim city council member, the meeting that the city manager... Just want to make sure.
I haven't met the mechanic, but I have some...
That would not be good.
That would not be good. We open up public hearing on this? Public comments, excuse me. Anybody for a public comment on this item? Mr. Ball? You need a mechanic.
Just on my hearing day.
Right here, sir, whatever you want. We'll put it in.
Council, new council, good to see everybody. I just have one question. The new interim manager, when is the existing manager, what is his actual date that he's leaving? August is thirty, thirty days.
Question. The middle of August.
Middle of August?
Yes.
A date?
I'm targeting August nineteenth.
And also, I noticed that a hundred-twenty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents per hour for an interim manager. Wow. That's a pretty good gig for a retired person, so I hope we get a new person, a new highly-qualified person as soon as we possibly can at a special, at that hour of the week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Any other comments? Bring it back to the dais. Any comments from council regarding staff on this item, these two items? If not, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve Resolution number twenty-two fifty-nine and Resolution number twenty-two sixty.
Second motion.
Vote please. Motion carries, hold your buttons. You're good. We're under public comments in our communications. No? Oh, item C. Where are we? Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Gosh. I thought we had a stack here. I didn't realize that. Yes, item C, Mr. Russi.
This item was requested on your behalf to be put on for consideration of how we can explore, looking at the selection of mayor and going back to some form of at-large mayor. And the direction that we discussed was to get council's authority to bring back an analysis, have staff bring back some type of an analysis on what happened and what was possible. At this point, state law does not allow for redistricting, other than under three distinct exceptions, none of which at this point apply. So our suggestion, given that that was the conversation that was had, is to allow us to go explore what options might be available, provide counsel, it would probably involve legal counsel to, that specializes in this field, to bring back scenarios, as well as what the possibility of, whether it's illegal challenge or other roadblocks might be in the way, and then allow council to take whatever action they feel is necessary at that point, but we just don't have the information at this point to guide you in what directions we want to go.
Okay.
I'd like to comment on this.
Well, this was an item that Mr. Johnson had brought up and discussed, and he wanted me to put on the agenda, just to see what options we do have, or to look at it to see if it's even feasible.
My, I was elected to District One, and my campaign was strictly to restore the vote for an elected mayor. And that was ninety-nine point nine percent of what I was campaigning on, was to bring back the elected mayor. And I want to do this right, and I know there's only a few limited ways, you know, these certain conditions. One is a court order to redistrict. The other is a change in the district boundaries. So any of those two, and, let's see. The council setting a legal claim for district boundaries in regards to the Voting Rights Act. So what I first want to know is, I know in District One, we want to elect the mayor. I don't necessarily know that in districts, other than District One. What I would like to have is a vote from all the residents, an advisory vote, not a vote to change it, because we can't legally do that, but I want an advisory vote from all the residents in Laverne to weigh in on this issue, because there's no sense in doing all of this and putting the work in it if residents don't want to do it. So that's what I am pushing for. We have a window right now, if we can get a ballot measure, an advisory ballot measure, done by October, or, excuse me, August twelfth, to be on the November ballot. That's what I am pushing for, is an advisory vote for the November ballot, asking residents, do you want to elect the mayor or not? Like I said, if we don't want to elect the mayor, if that's what residents want, then we keep it the way it is. But if residents are like District One residents, and they, like they were, like the whole city was in nineteen-seventy-two, we want to elect the mayor for a two-year term. That's what I'm pushing for. Any other comments?
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Johnson, I think you're talking about, for the people out there, I was referencing Election Code two-one-six-zero-five. I won't get into full details, please take a moment of time to look at that. And that's what it's talking about, the redistricting, and how we can be able to do that if we need to. I can tell you this one thing, Mr. Johnson, that the folks that I've talked to in my district and District Three, throughout Laverne so far, have always voiced a safe opinion about to go back to at-large as a whole. And I understand there's complexities of it, but just for the folks out there, please understand that section two-one-six-zero-five election code is what Councilman Johnson's referring to when it comes to new territories and other issues that pertain to redistricting. So, thank you.
So I just want to address the elections code. So the elections code is very specific in the three instances in which we can redistrict, which is part of what I understand would have to happen if we were going to go to an elected mayor. However, I don't know that, because I'm not an elections attorney, that's not my purview. So I have no problem with exploring what the options are, but I am not necessarily interested in incurring the cost of putting it on the October, or the November ballot if the legal opinion is going to tell us it doesn't, I hate to say this, that we can't do it. Because it does, it's not a, from what I understand, it's not a cheap endeavor to get it put on the ballot. So I'd rather see what the legal parameters are, what the, you know, what challenges we might face, so that we can explore that in its entirety, before we even consider putting it on a ballot for consensus or, you know, information gathering from the residents. Because if at the end of the day, we're going to be told we can't do it, then we've spent the money out of our coffers, which is essentially taxpayer money, to get an answer to something that we will have to pay an attorney for at this point, to just get an analysis of whether or not we can even do that in the first place. And that will be, I think, less than what it would cost to put it on the ballot at this time. So again, not opposed to exploring what the options are, but I think the correct path would be to get the legal analysis, to get that information back, so that this council can decide, is that the correct path to take or not take.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you. I too agree with Councilman Law, where, where we do not, to spend the money to put on a ballot is, and then if the residents vote yes or no, but then in turn, that we can't even do that. That's what the fear of. We should get the, our council to weigh in and then be able to put it on the ballot. I was one that voted to have a mayor at large. So I see that point of having that. But what I don't want to do is put it on a ballot, and then that, while other people vote, that then not be able to do, if we can't do that in the first place.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. What is the estimated cost, and do we even, can we even get it on the ballot in November as an advisory vote?
Well, the initial cost, because I did inquire with the county, is eighty-five to ninety thousand. I don't have the exact number, but to do an advisory vote for November would be eighty-five to ninety thousand. Now, the second question, we don't even know exactly what the question is, there are that we would ask even in that, in an advisory. So there's, there's still some questions that I think legal counsel would have to come back with if that were to be the case. I don't think spending that money will get you anything different than if you were to ask for a survey once you had a legal path. So if your council desire was to ask us to go get the legal path to make this happen, you decided that you wanted to see what the interest was of the community, you could then do a citywide survey for much less than what it would be to do an advisory vote, and you would end up in the same place with nothing binding, but just good information on what the level of interest was within the community.
What would the, the first one we talked about, which was actually attorneys and council, to see what options are right now, as far as the options, what legality of the options are right now? What would be the cost of that?
I don't know. I'm going to guess five to ten thousand dollars, and it could be, it depends on, there's no path for this at this moment. So we're asking somebody to look at the election law, look at the California Voting Rights Act. So we're asking somebody to look at the election law, look at the California Voting Rights Act, and say, what, what opportunities do you have would fall in within those two? And what is then the potential risk or exposure that you might be creating by opening that door? So that's the analysis that we would ask somebody to put something together. But I honestly can't tell you because I, it's not an easy, just look at the law and say, here's how you do it.
I still think we should get a vote of the residents to know if we should be even going one direction or the other. When you talk about, I think you originally told me it was about $100,000 to do the special election or to take it to the voters. So I'm glad it's less than that. But using our current population, even at 100,000, that's less than $3.19 per person. That, is it worth five bucks to?
Yep, absolutely.
To vote for a mayor? I think, I think it is, and the residents in Districts One, I know, do think it is. At least that's what I was elected on. Now, the city has been very creative in the past by suing itself. We sued, the city has sued itself in the past to try to get these to court, to have the court make a decision. That was done even before I was on the council. I believe it was the redevelopment agency in the city sued itself to get a court order. Is that not right?
Validation of a bond action.
Yes, I mean, that's the validation action, but it depends on no one answering that complaint. And sometimes that's not the case. Okay, go ahead. And I, yeah, sorry. No, I, I've got attorneys in my law firm working on this issue now. And we also have a roadmap for the council as to simply what's possible. But it's, it is, believe me, much more difficult than just throwing the old gear shift into reverse. Because if you go back to an elected mayor, then you're not going to have five districts, you're going to have four. So that means that lengthy process that some of you sat through, I'd do that all over. It'd have been. But there's the code section that seems to be limiting on the circumstances where you can actually do this. But I do have attorneys who know what the question is, are prepared to advise the council on the roadway and potential problems. My concern is we have a deadline of August 12th. And I want to beat that deadline as far as having the question at least submitted, even if we have to pull it at the last moment, but to get it to where we can get this on the November ballot.
So I guess, can I, I just have a question. So if the desire is to get the will of the people to find out what it is that they want, right? And you've already spoken to your district because that's what you campaigned on. I guess what is the obstacle or maybe what is the hindrance in doing a survey like Mr. Russi suggested, which would, A, be more cost efficient? I personally think people would respond perhaps better to an online survey that could be distributed via links, that could be posted on, you know, social media or whatever, and ask people to respond. And you might actually get better response earlier to get engaged. Then we, then we, we save more money by saying, okay, we won't engage legal counsel until we know that, hey, all the districts have sounded in and said, you know, this proportion of the population in each district is interested in looking at this further, and then engage legal counsel and go down that route.
I think a survey would be great, but it doesn't carry the same weight that a vote of the people does. And if we did take this to court, then we would have the will of the people, at least in an elected fashion, for the court to consider. And I think that is very important.
And I guess I, my thought would be, insert instances, and in a lot of legal instances, the will of the people will, may not supersede what the law says. And that's, that's part of the problem. And so that's why I want to know, what are the possibilities for us? But do in a way that is cost efficient, because we are stewards of the finances for this city. And while maybe $85,000, $90,000, when you break it down per resident to $5 a person isn't a lot, $85 to $90 is also the salary of potentially a police officer, a fire, fire. You know, so, and so we're talking about, that takes away from that. So if we can obtain the information in a way that is simpler, that is potentially will get more response, that isn't going to cost us what it would amount to perhaps a salary personnel, I'd like to explore that.
Not to mention, if you rush a decision, you don't have the benefit of, if there are legal challenges that could come about, pitfalls, you don't have the benefit of time in understanding the implications of those before you put something forward. With a survey, there is no fuse that has to be done by August 12th, 13th, or whatever the date is. You have time to get this information. If it's not sufficient information, you can direct us to go back and get more information so that when the council decides that they want to do the survey, they know what questions they want to ask the public to be able to then know what the path is and what the risks are associated to that, if you even want to ask them that question.
I'm sorry, suggesting do we do a mailer? Every, every resident? I mean, that way they can all get it?
Yeah.
Get that? Oh, I'm sorry. That way they all get that, every resident can, and then they could send that letter back saying they want it or don't want it?
We can survey, I mean, that is, that can be constructed.
Instead of online.
Right, we, we could construct that in multiple ways. That is certainly an option, but I, I think that gives you more time to really evaluate this more properly than to try and push this through for what amounts to an unblinded vote and spending $100,000, $90,000 in the process. Unnecessary.
Well, I mean, I, prior to something being very frugal, and I was not happy with how the five districts came down. I was very verbal about it, and I felt that the election of a mayor was taken away from the people, and I mean, that's just what happened. And a lot of people weren't informed, you know. Everybody, a lot of people I talked to and canvassing were, you mean, I can't vote for you? No, you can't. Or can I vote, can I not vote for mayor? No, you can't. You're going to vote for a council member in your district, or you don't vote for anyone because your district's not up right now. So it was a very, it was kind of convoluted and confusing for a lot of people, which was very upsetting to me because we changed the way that we vote. And we, one thing you don't do is you don't take the vote of the people away, ever. That's not a good thing to do. I was very unhappy with that. Outcome was fine, I mean, you know, the chips fall where they may. But I don't necessarily like spending money from our city coffers, but we have had a number of expenditures that probably were the most frugal things that we've done in the past, and we have to sit on those, we pay for those, but to resolution. So we're at a point here, we either, now, do we go to public comment on this?
Not necessary. It's certainly up to the council, I mean.
Do you?
Why not?
Yeah, I'm hoping it's here.
Public comment here.
Yeah.
Are we done right now? Let's go to public comment?
They'll come back to us.
Yes, it will come back. I'll open up public comment. Ms. Pochon.
I was one of the biggest advocates for having the people be able to vote for a mayor, especially for those who live in districts that aren't eligible for reelection at this time. But with that being said, I would have to agree with Councilmember Lau and Cosby. I, I would rather see us save that $100,000 or whatever the costs may ultimately be and wait to see what happens with the City of Santa Monica case. Because if that case is upheld, it will set the precedence. 21605 will no longer be a factor. And then the city can use that money for legality purposes to reverse the entire district voting, not just for the mayor, but for all districts. So we can go back to being the city of Laverne that we once were. Just a suggestion. And I also agree with Cash that we should do it as a survey to the residents as a mailer, which should have been done to begin with. And it was done online, and a lot of other avenues should have been explored for notifying the residents about this district. And I need to use your words against you, Russi, but, you know, you say you don't want to rush into a decision, but that's exactly what the district voting was. It was crammed down our throats in a three-month period. And without that proper notification, residents, I think if we had more residents involved, I think the city would have really thought twice about doing what they did and voting the way that they had. So I will say that we shouldn't rush into this as much as Mr. Johnson wants to get it on the ballot. I do agree, though, I feel like ballot is a more authoritative way of doing it rather than just a survey that has no bearing, you know, into the city and, you know, what can get lost in the mail and, you know, piles up on somebody's desk here at the staff. But ultimately, I think we should wait because we spend this money now, and then City Santa Monica case is upheld, and then that would be additional funds. So why not just wait? We are happy that the council chose that Mr. Hepburn is going to continue to be our mayor, which is probably what the majority of the city would have voted for to begin with. So I don't feel like the city's in a bad place with the decision that's been made, but I think we need to be patient and be smart about how this money is spent going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pochon.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor. I didn't, I don't know when this item got added to the agenda. Maybe I missed it, but I thought I was looking at the agenda. I agree, rushing into something, again, this last one was shoved down our throats. And the majority of the people that came here time after time after time said no. And four council people said, tough. One of, two of those people are now gone, one of them voted out of office. So the people did speak in this last election. And they said, we're, we don't want this. So, Mr. Johnson, I agree. Getting it on the ballot, given us 30 days, seems awful quick. I do find it fascinating that we're talking about the city attorney, I believe, just said that he's got people looking into it as an office. Didn't they look into it before they did it? Did somebody determine this was legal when it happened? The prior council said, we don't need to take it to the citizens. It's not up to them to vote. We can make that decision. Two of them are now gone. We had a vote recently. The next vote is now two years away. So it seems like we do have some time to look into this instead of rush, 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 spend a bunch of money, and find out that maybe the Santa Monica ruling overturns it anyway. But we only had 5,546 people vote in this last election. That's sad. Forty percent of our people did not get to vote. How can that be acceptable by any of you? I believe the 5,546 number was damn close to what Mr. Hepburn won his mayorship four years ago. So we had no turnout. That's ridiculous. The citizens of this city want to vote. They want to vote for mayor. I believe they would love to vote for all the council people. But stealing our right to vote is a crime. And I hope to hell it gets reconciled.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Any other comments? Yes. Ms. Pochon.
So I always give a little bit different opinion on certain things. And State of California is the one that's forcing us to district voting. I do agree with the previous council that if we had the four with the at-large, we would have one district that had a mayor and a councilperson living there. And there's very good potential that it could be people with their own special interests. You could even have maybe the owners of Sierra Laverne Country Club paying campaign for people in District One, getting them on council and giving them an extra vote to vote yes for something like that. So, I mean, I think it does make it off balance, and I agree with what the previous council voted because this is being forced down our throat. I'm getting a little tired of people saying, this was pressed on us and nobody knew about it. We had at least five meetings about it. We had two or three study sessions, and then went to council. When they were doing the debates for the candidates, I don't remember who it was that said, do you know about this? And people, oh, no, no. And several of us said, yeah, we knew. And somebody turned around and said, not everybody can go to council meetings. You don't have to go to council meetings. You can read the packet. You can watch meetings for the two-week or three-week period we have between meetings. I think that the people that don't know about it, you know, they need to get a little more involved because we can't spoon-feed everything to everybody. In District One, I know you're saying, the people you canvass and talk to, I'm in District One, I voted for your neighbors. And I've got nothing against you, we used to be neighbors, and I like Steve and I like Lori. So it's not bad. But anytime you go to someone's door and you say, did you know you can't vote for a mayor anymore? They're, oh my God, kill those bastards. So, so my point is, you can say to people, here's a survey, we can put it on next door. You are going to get 80% of the people because they are not informed, they don't understand. This isn't what our previous council did to this. It's a State of California thing. I agree with those that said, we do need to not spend a big amount of money on this. We need to see what happens with Santa Monica, we need to see what the other things. Because I'd love it if it was all back to prime at-large seats. That's what I want. But we don't necessarily have that option. Anyway, I know people are working on it, I just have to give a little bit different opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Me, 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 me. Me, 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 me.
Nothing like an inference.
No, man, I've heard it once in a while.
Mr. Gill, have before.
The lady said that it's a California thing that we are districting. Show me the money. Show me the paperwork that says that. Because there is none. I know because I've looked at the paperwork. I've looked at the statutes. There is nothing that says that we have to go and district. Nothing. So unless she's got the paperwork in her purse, and she show me in the next five minutes, it ain't going to happen. Now, as far as us and the mayor, and having us go ahead and get to vote, I'm all down with a mailer. And let every individual be notified. I'm fine with that. That's the coolest thing. There's been points in my life where senators have sent mailers. And they said, hey, this is what's going to happen. Do you want to know about it? Do you want us to make change? How do you want me to do this? This is senators of the United States that have sent flyers to the people in their districts. They had no problem sending flyers, asking questions of their people. All it did was just go ahead and say, yep, 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 nope, send it on back. Simple as pie. Flyer's not that expensive. Pretty darn cheap from where I come from. And it can be done. So all we do is just let the people know what's going on and make the changes when we need to. As far as Santa Monica is concerned, it is going to take a while. It's not going to be an overnight thing, we've already seen that. We've already seen that. So we can be sitting on our lunches forever. So we could sit and ride that horse. Or we could let the people ask and find out now. I'd rather go ahead and find out now. Don't you agree?
Yes.
Here we go. Thank you very much.
My name is, and I'm glad you speak at these events now. The concern that I have is, one of the things that's not being addressed is, with only four weeks, what's the impact for our current mayor? Does he resign? Does he get back to a two-year cycle? All the impact. I don't think you can just kind of invite the both that says, "Would you like to vote for mayor?" And you'll also include that this will redistrict to only four districts. With four districts, you will be reducing the impact of any of the minorities, which is one of the big things that we were trying to accomplish, is to give that minority vote more strength. Now, I would prefer five votes district, say one. But nobody was able to come up with a solution that allowed that to happen. And to spend eighty-five or ninety-five thousand dollars with a ballot measure that may or may not address these issues. Because it takes a while to get those proper verbiage in there before it's put on the ballot. Because if a district affects, "I'd like to vote for mayor," well, what does that mean? Does that mean that everybody gets to vote for mayor? Does it mean that District One gets to vote for mayor? So this is going to take some thought process. And I advise you to just listen to your city attorney and staff and your council members to be aware that spending a hundred thousand dollars, wanting to come back and say, "This cannot be done," only creates more hardship and more difficulty between citizens who said, "We should have been able to do it. Why can't we do it?" So my suggestion is that we continue to take a look at it, to see what means or measures can be done or can't be done. Then we go from there. I think getting everybody riled up and saying, "You want to vote for mayor," or just, I'm not even sure what your verbiage would be. "Would you like to be able to vote for mayor?" You make a yes vote of the ninety-nine percent of people. But it doesn't necessarily mean that you are able, as the city council, to do that without going out, doing all the redistricting, doing all the work that just, they separated you on here, did before. And I'm sure the three of you will inform the two new members that that was a challenge. Whether you voted for it or against it, it was still a challenge. You spent hours and hours and weeks and weeks on public meetings and information. So just wanted to provide my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie.
I would hate for one of the first acts of the city council to be, to make a decision to rather factlessly spend a rather large amount of money. I think a decision has been made. I think it's entirely possible to send out a mailer to everybody to which people could respond or not respond the way people do when invited to vote for a person for office or not vote. And I, as one of the people who did not vote in elections, would love to have my, an opportunity to be able to weigh in with my opinion on this. I think another mistake that we sometimes make in public comments is to think that the people who are the loudest people in the room are the most right people in the room and they have everybody on their side. We don't know how everybody feels. And we don't, we don't know, in fact, we do know, that a hundred percent of the people in District One did not all vote for Mr. Johnson. Some of them, in fact, close to fifty percent voted for Mr. Davis. And there must have been some reason for that to occur as well. So I think we need to ask everybody's position on this and then take it from there in a measured way. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Anyone else would like to speak on this? Lily.
Emily, Lily Grant, I'm here again. So for this district voting thing from last year, I start from the beginning, come here over and over, because actually I learned about that. This is start from the voting rights. People, we still have the voting rights. For my history, actually, I come from communist country. We didn't really know what is called voting, never. But since my husband was not very happy, vote for me for the president, he didn't want to vote, I figured I have to vote by myself. So I become citizen after ten years later. Actually, I already is in the vern, seventy years. Before, before I come to the meetings, before I come to school board, I make very good money, hundreds of thousands, online consultant. So why I give up that money, somebody, I think it's more than the amount you guys mentioned just now, right? I make more than that. Why I feel so, so important, I come here. The first meeting I come here, probably like the law sale, fire department, pretty much very thick number about the law sale. How big? Hundred million dollar thing, okay? Go to insurance, whatever, I don't know, but that's, let me pay attention about politics. What's happening in the city, I'm going to retire. My kids grow up, born and can grow up, that's for my pension. So since then, my husband went back to work, okay? He make that money. I focus my two kids, then come to city council meeting, school board meeting, over and over from last three years. So why I say it's so important for me? I'm glad today, mayor becoming again, right? The first, last-elect mayor and the first rotating mayor. So that is already says the voice from the people. And he gets a very historical, high percentage of voting. And then I remember the last time, he pretty much closed to ten thousand. That is really, really very big turnout. That is already says the voice of the Laverne citizen. So now I'm not really happy. I'm not get chance to vote for him. I'm not get chance to vote for Cash, but I vote for Johnson. Actually, Stephen Johnson, I barely know you before, but I'm really impressed because he really knocked door to door. And then I met him on the street too. And then my whole street neighbor, we vote for two color, right? Okay? Blue, orange, yellow. I still said, even though we vote for different people, we still good neighbor. So our street is very good neighborhood. So why I so concerned this? Because I am so glad Stephen Johnson brought up the first meeting when he sit here today, keep his promise. I'm so happy and I'm glad to vote for you because you keep your promise. For the most people vote for you. Because when you talk to people, you even knock the door twice, the whole district. I'm so impressed because I am the social media person. I have a group, I have a page. I'm so active on the Facebook, Nextdoor, or any other social media. I can see the voice. People so confused, so mad and so frustrated about, we're not going to go for anybody, mayor, city council. They have no clue about that. So what I understand, why is so important for me? Actually, my family, I have four people, we all have different opinion. We belong to probably different party, okay? So, but they taught me, come here to comment for the city issue from the beginning, from the Y Avenue, right? I knocked a door to, for the Y and Y Avenue issue. So that's why I'm so happy we work it out. We really won and then we don't want it. I'm happy for city manager and Mrs. Cotton, Robin Cotton, about Y Avenue. I really feel like, oh, my gosh, in America, a great, a great country, a small voice like me, but we act together, we have hundreds petition. And then went through all the meeting and then finally, we keep our small poverty safe, old-fashioned style, and then knocked the Y Avenue, come up driveway, classroom. So that's what I understand. The small voices act together could be very big because we are really, really no longer, I can tell it's losing this right in America, in California. So I think I'm just not only present myself, it's present so many people just like me. We have no clue about politics, we have no clue about the community, or even know city council has to do so many work. We respect all your work. So why not just, we have opportunity, the deadline is October 10. Actually, is, I feel like the two, three months, we could get a lot of things done. Get a survey on the city council, a city page, right? People go on Facebook, get a survey. Now we get the opportunity, have this one, do one, yes or no, very clear, receivable on the page. And then, of course, we get the papers from city, every citizen possible could get a survey very quick. One, two, three, design very good question. Do you agree with this, spend this money to put on the ballot? Do you agree? Do it. We got opportunity. If finally, people say, "No," fine, okay? But at least we have chance to do that. I don't like the people get shut down. Because we come for complaint or comment about the district voting from last year. As I know, ninety percent people like me who sit here, we can hear most people come here and say, "No, we don't want it." Very few people come here or call from Zoom, say, "Yes." That's the voice is eighty, ninety percent, as I know.
Lily, can we finish up?
Yeah, it's already more than three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Anyone else? Please, come on up.
Thank you. I'm Sophia Tyner. We're talking about a large amount of money to reverses, which is what I would prefer. Or we're also talking about a little tiny amount of money to send out mailers. Either way, whether we send out mailers and they cost a dollar or whether we spend a hundred thousand dollars, I feel that taking the vote away is, there is more amount of money that can justify that. Now, whatever happens, I'm not sure how this is going to go, but however, whatever becomes of this or however it ends, even if we sent out the one-dollar mailer, that should have never happened. And if we do, the current, the new council should not be blamed for that money to be spent. I say it is the past council that decided against what I saw, a majority of people in here, for the several meetings that I came to. That responsibility lies on them for that money to be spent. Because that was something that happened without consideration of the people of the community. Thanks.
Thanks, Cynthia. Ms. Pudlin.
Part of the very bridge thing, one of the issues that everybody, maybe not everybody, but a lot of us have is the optics of different things done by the city council for different measures. For example, when there was interest on the previous council for a tax increase, I do not know the specifics, but I think maybe a four-color, multi-page brochure was created and mailed to each household or voting household. When, and that measure passed. I think the council wanted the additional dollars. I don't know whether it was the best idea, but they informed the people and it passed. When we were considering one of the most important things about the city in changing the way the districts were like, that we had districts or not, in exploring districts, excuse me, not a thing was sent to every household. Not a thing. Information was put on Twitter, on Facebook. And Laverne has a huge population of retired people who probably never go on the computer. And so the optics of those two things, I think, concern a lot of people. And also the optics of the fact that it was a consultant for the redistricting, I don't think people felt that the input for the districts was well-vetted, so to speak. So I think there was a lot of dissatisfaction about what seemed to be election judgment. I also have a question about the legal exploration we're going to do. My experience is there, every lawyer has a different opinion. So what legal counsel are we going to, to look into this matter? Is it legal counsel that's objective? Is it legal counsel that has an agenda? I don't know legality is enough to make a comment. But those are two of my two issues, the optics of the two initiatives that were done so differently by the same city council and the best advice of legal counsel. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pudgeon. Barry, then we've got Thomas Allison on the line. Is that correct? For that reason.
Okay. Sorry, I'll keep it short because I'll probably forget what I was going to say anyway. So a couple of things. I have gotten a survey from the city in the past, and I don't even remember what the issue was. It was an online survey. But I do remember that the questions and the, you know, point A to B to C, whatever, it felt so much like it was trying to get you to a set end, that there was a set preferred response that the city wanted. So if there is a survey, I would ask that it be very open. We want to know what you think. We're not going to give you little bits of information to try to make you go this way or that way. Ask the question. And I do feel it needs to be something in the mail because there are so many people that, my mother, I mean, the only thing she gets on the line for is looking at Eagles nests and, and like, little mother's shots up her game. But there are a lot of people that...
Handlers and Eagles.
Yeah, right. So that would be the two things, is mail and then make it carry. I mean, don't lead anybody. Just make, here's the question, here's what we have, here's what we got, what do you want? And then as far as the legal questions, you know, I don't know all the laws, but it seems like that there were challenges, but those are things that can be looked at. And I know that the one HOA at the Sierra Laverne, they broke through rules of what was described to us when we went to all those meetings about communities of interest. And you don't divide up a neighborhood, you don't divide up a community. And they went right down the middle of an HOA. So there are legal issues. There's also the legal question of where we began to go for at-large mayor, that was by a vote of the people back in the seventies. So in this case, we went and took the vote of the people that we wanted that large mayor and then we took all these comments from people who said the same thing. And then the council voted to break it up and make it a rotation. So then, is there a legal factor there to kind of overrule what the people had asked for? So those are just my things to consider.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. Shall we go to Thomas Allison?
Good evening, council. Unfortunately, I like Mr. Paul, reviewed the agenda and I didn't see this issue on it, otherwise I wouldn't have left. I have to suggest that I think we want to start waiting rather quickly. I understand the logic of Mr. Johnson winning being an electoral critique of the status quo. But I don't think that that status quo means an application of his responsibility to be an appropriate steward of public funds. To just throw eighty-five thousand dollars at an issue that can ultimately be a legal dead end is a gross and irresponsible use of funds. As a District One resident, I would prefer eighty thousand dollars be used to protect our cost guard who gets almost run over every single day. I would prefer our sidewalk by City Hall be fixed so that I don't trip and fall on my runs around the neighborhood. That is an appropriate use of public funds to just grandstand and throw almost a hundred thousand dollars at this issue just because it was a single issue that he was elected on is irresponsible. And any council member who votes consistent with this is also irresponsibly using public funds. And it just, I'm almost flabbergasted that we've gotten here so fast already. So I urge this council to exercise the discipline that it has over this time, the reason why Laverne is in the financial position that it is, and not throw eighty-five thousand at this irresponsible process. Hey, we wouldn't even take a free audit. Why would we, never mind, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak on this?
Yeah.
Going to bring it back up to the days for, I do have a couple of comments. I do take offense to responsible, not being responsible. I was called not responsible when I suggested the fire department at Station Three for a budget of one-point-three million dollars to reactivate that fire department with the property. that fire department with proper staff in place. That was not irresponsible, it was a plan that was designed by the fire department itself, so I don't care for that. But I will say that I think that, coming out of the gate right now, it's a little sensitive subject for the fact that not a lot of us are happy with five districts. Because I think that it was the company that did it, and how it was done was poorly done. It was not televised, as we've said before, and I've said that in public. But I think at this point right now, I think we need to step back. I think we need to, I think I like the mailer, but make it very poignant, very, very, to the point. Yes or no, an elected mayor, and maybe another couple items on there. Not a direction to push people in a direction right or left, but to be just point blank. Do a survey of other people and let them make the decision. And let our legal counsel review this to see what we can do. I think our time, although I do agree with Mr. Johnson, I didn't like it either, I think it was a vote taken away from the people. But at the end of the day, we're here now, there's a lot of decisions being made, Santa Monica decision, whether they unravel this or not. We're here where we are, I think we should move forward and find out what the avenues we have in order to move forward with this, to see what avenues we have to look at this down the road. We do have a few years. And I, the problem with November is tight, it's a tight frame. We've got a lot of things, we've got an outgoing manager, we've got, we're gonna have to search for a new manager, we have to look for a finance director, we've got other things going on in the city. And I, I just think that our timing right now should be spent with our legal counsel to find out avenues of what we can do. I think the mailer is very important to see the pulse of the people. I think that's extremely important, because as anyone knows, I'm transparent, I wanna know, you know, the will of the people is very important to me. And if this unravels down the road, then it unravels. But if it doesn't, and we have to go forward, then we'll have to figure out a way to do that. But I do think that we need to go the cautious route. And again, I will say that Mr. Johnson's motion, or his request, is very valid. I think it's just we need to do it in a little more cautious fashion. That's my own personal opinion. I think we need to, again, do our survey, let our legal counsel look at it, see what's there, what's not there. And look what other communities are doing. Because it's, these things are gonna change and morph, you know? And that's my personal opinion. Any other council opinions or comments?
So I know it's getting late, and I just wanna be clear on what our action item is. It's not a motion, but it's a direction to staff, correct? About what the course forward should be.
Yes, and I would suggest, based on some of the comment, if it is, I still think bringing back some legal analysis path, however you wanna describe it, is the first step. But in conjunction with that, we can also bring together a budget for doing a mailer, for what that would cost, and then get requests at that later time and appropriation as well, to then move forward with that. Because that would be the next phase that we would wanna pursue.
And I would be in agreement with that. So I think concurrent to what, you know, the mayor has indicated, legal analysis, please come back with a budget for what it looks like to send a mailer out, how that is addressed, so that, to Ms. Barry's point, that the questions aren't leading, that they're appropriate, et cetera, whatever, so that you can truly get the pulse of the people, et cetera. Is there an option for mailer and online? You know, look at, and I'm not trying to create more work, but I am sensitive to the fact that some people do use computers, some people don't. So how do we reach whoever, you know, everybody that needs to be reached in an appropriate manner? So if you can come back with that, I think that would be helpful.
I think a mailer and the water bill, it gets it anyway. That's the one way to do it.
But we have to be very careful about that. The proceeds could be dependent.
Independent.
Get water bills.
So let us, we'll figure it out, we'll come back. But one other concern I would have with a mailer or some other type of online venue is, how do you prevent people from voting more than once? I mean, let us come back, I hear your concern. I think there's a way to avoid duplication, but let us go back, do some research, and go back a budget point.
I had one final comment, and Mr. Carter, I appreciate your comment. Also, Mr. Bowen, very disappointed in the turnout. My problem with putting it on the November election also is the fact that, who's gonna vote? I mean, seriously? We have to be serious about this. You know, forget about giving us a right to vote for a mayor. How about a right to vote for people in office, period? Look at how many people turned out in Laverne. It was pathetic. I mean, I just say it, it's pathetic. That's our constitutional right to vote. And it's very important that we do that. And so we put on the November ballot, and we get a short response out of thirty-two thousand some people, it's crazy, anyway.
And voting's low when it's a non-presidential election.
Very true, but it's still very low.
My biggest concern is giving undue expectations. When if we cannot legally do it, but we put out for a vote, or put it out for a survey, and then the expectations of our citizens are one way when we can't do that in the first place. I wanna make sure our expectations are given out to our people what they can and cannot do. So that's my biggest worry, my biggest concern, is that if we can't legally do it, but the expectations, then we'll, it's really steering our residents down a dead-end road when there's no exits. And so I wanna make sure, by having legal advice, is what that offer up could be for them.
I think the district gain is a ten-year cycle. So we've got roughly nine years left in that cycle, since it was voted in November of last year. An advisory vote allows us, when we do have an opportunity, if there is an annexation of land, or other viable legal way to make that change to four districts and elected mayor. It gives us that authority from the residents. And that's what a vote would give us. We would have that in place in case we annex a piece of property, and boom, we can do it.
Change symmetric.
Yes.
We're not there yet, though, we're not there. We're just not there. But I, well, I think, are we in concurrence, council, that we give our staff direction to look at the legality of it, and also look at the fact of some type of a mailer to find out the temperature of our residents? And figure out the best way to do that?
My concern is that a mailer may not be the official way to get that authority.
We'll, we'll have to figure that out down the road.
Regardless, you may end up having to take it to a vote of the people. But that's still, the advisory vote doesn't get you there anyways. You may need some other action by the at-large electorate, electorate, later. So we just don't know at this point.
Council? Are we in concurrence that we should let staff move ahead and let it be discussed?
I'm fine with that.
Mr. Johnson? I know you're not happy with it, but-
I'm not happy.
I know, I know. But I think we need to move forward at this time when we'll be discussing it. Public, let's move to-
And Mr. Merrill, just note that somebody raised their hand after it already went back to the dice. I did not bring them in because it was after the public comment.
I think we're gonna have to keep it closed, unfortunately. We have, now who do public comment? I have Sherry Bass.
Yeah, I made my public comment.
Here, Sherry, just take it, please.
I don't like the optics of that.
Hey, there's no extremes attached.
You gotta make that look better than that.
We have Bob Nicholas. He's been waiting patiently back there.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. I became a resident of Laverne in nineteen eighty-eight. And for three reasons, I wanted a place that was safe for my family. Laverne offered that, a good educational system, one of the best in the area, and also a beautiful city. Now, if I were choosing, I would also add, Laverne has wonderful people, terrific people, and terrific council and leadership, so I appreciate that. Just briefly about myself, I'm a big-picture person. In the nineteen eighties, I served as Director of Strategic Planning for a large national organization. Later, I served two decades as the President of Educational Services International. We placed teachers in educational programs in fifteen countries, among them China, Russia, Vietnam, Morocco, Turkey, and others. So I like the big picture. I know we have to do it in details, and my wife is way better at that. And I know you have a lot of details to deal with, but tonight I wanna talk about the big picture. In fifty years of management, one of the most important things I learned is that your first task is to determine what's most important, and do that first. What's job one? So that's what I wanna talk to you about. I don't know how this is done, but I'm calling for the leadership of Laverne to conduct what I'm calling a comprehensive security review. Comprehensive security review.
If you could press the council, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, yes. Why is it important to do a comprehensive security review for the city of Laverne? Three reasons. Number one, I think it's a good thing to do about a redicting once every ten years. And I don't think we've ever really done it once. Not a comprehensive security review. Correct me if I'm wrong. The second reason why I think it's important is one word, Uvalde. You may think it's late, it's really about three minutes, I'm sorry. Don't hit them. And it's not just Uvalde, you know about Sandy Hook and Portland, and there's a list of some hundred school shootings in the last twenty years. The third reason is that my three daughters all went to Vannita schools, and I have six grandchildren. They're not in the city, but I care about them in the kind of world that they're gonna inherit. What is a comprehensive security review? And I've only got a couple of minutes left. This is my shortlist of what might be included. Obviously, it's gonna be to look at how the police might react to a great big problem like they had in Uvalde or others, or how the fire department is prepared to deal with the next horrendous fire that might come to Laverne. But it might also look at things like security issues related to the mentally ill people that are around our community, or security issues related to the homeless. Or perhaps, there could be toxic waste or chemical issues that could threaten our city. There could be biomedical leak in our city. There could be a train derailment. There have been plane crashes in the past at Bracket Field. The big earthquake will happen sometime, and we need to know the risk and to be prepared. Is our electrical grid really secure? Or is there a risk to that? Is there potential contamination of water or the air? Or might there be catastrophic shortages of water? And what risk is that to us, and what would we do? Could there be a political takeover of our city? Any of you remember the city of Bell? And what happened there, and the financial failure that happened in that city? There could be cyber internet attack. There could be domestic terrorism. There could be gangs. There could be prison escapes. There could be insufficient medical facilities or insufficient paramedics to respond to 911. This is my shortlist, and I hope you would make up your own. But do you get the idea of what a comprehensive review is? We, you know, a lot of things are urgent, and we want it to happen. But I'm calling on you to think about what's important. Do you think the citizens of Uvalde would have wished that they had done something like this before that happened there? We gotta get ahead of these things, and we can by doing a comprehensive review. You could make the list. So here, quickly, is the process. Number one, you would appoint a task force or a team. We got, one minute.
I'll give you thirty seconds.
Okay. Appoint an appropriate group to do this. Identify the comprehensive list of security issues. Prioritize the top ten of those. Design investigative tools. Plan a firm timeline, I would say ten months. Review security issues and select the top three most important security problems that we face. And then assign groups to work on those. And then develop workable plans.
If you could round that circle.
And fix the top three, and next, fix the top ten.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Very much for your time. Although now I'm extremely depressed. Anybody else for a public comment? Let's go to channel.
I know the weather base is terrible, I'm making a claim. I wanted to-
You're having beer and tacos, what? Your parents will be happy.
Hey, I made some damn good tacos.
You do?
I'd like to welcome the new members of the council. And I just wanna give a fair warning that you're in for a treat for us residents that take these things extremely seriously. Those of you that have attended meetings in the past know that I speak on nearly every item. So you will be sick of me quickly. So I'm sure Carter, and Mr. Carter, and Mr. Davis are glad that they're off their dents to listen to me anymore. But at the last meeting, there was a comment made that really resonated with me, and it said that they hope that the residents' comments would no longer be negative. And I just want to establish now, for your very first meeting, that part of the reason our comments are negative is because the city fails to respond to us residents, whether it's emails, phone calls, voicemails. For example, I have asked Mr. Russi for a copy of the presentation that Chief Nick did that was presented on the PowerPoint with the study session prior to the decision that was made that the city would remain with Laverne Fire Department. I have yet to receive that presentation. There is a homeowner in our city who has requested four times, and she has sent it to thirteen people. Each individual council member, and many of the staff, four different times, and has not received any response other than received. They haven't answered her questions, they haven't given her any documentation, nothing. So when you hear the negativity, and the anger, and the disgust in our voices, it is because these are the things that we are dealing with. So I hope that the new council members will, you know, may help in that regard, that going forward, respond to the residents, engage with them, talk with them, even if it's after an evening, and get a feel for what really needs to be done, and that, I think, is one of them. And that costs zero dollars to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pudlin. I mean, yes, you're on. Yes, you may.
First of all, Mr. Nichols. I applaud you for bringing those things up to council. I deal with emergency management every day, disaster recovery, so I see these things happening, and it is not for the better. And cities, our state and local governments are not prepared.
Avon, this way.
Sorry, sorry so much. Okay, so relatively likely my beer is I wanted to, I wanted to welcome Mr. Kashi Kwan Nida. Am I good, right? Kashi Kwan Nida, and Mr. Johnson to council. And I wanted to thank you for stepping in to continue the work, right, the legacy of Laverne City Council, and Robin and you, and especially what they've done in their service. There is a lot of work to do. I think the last hour's really, you know, shown that, right? Anyway, there's a lot of work to be done. We think that we can get the job done by continuing, you know, the mission and working together. Never forget that you are our neighbors, and you're our friends. And you are to represent and serve the people who are in the city of Laverne. Not a individual, not for- A lot of individuals, non-people, right? So the people who are voting for you in your district are in the district. So whether you are on the dais, on the dish, or in closed session, we expect that you will be professional, constructive, respectful, and to further the message. Thank you, welcome, and I would be honored.
Thank you, Yvonne. Anyone else? We will move to the phones. You're typical to listen.
I feel sorry for the fire chief.
Great, great.
This is Thomas again. Thank you for hearing me again. I do want to apologize for my tone in the last comment. It did drop below the threshold I like to maintain for a public decline. So please excuse me for that. I don't want that my use of the word irresponsible. I think idiosyncratic sensitivities toward terms shouldn't result in inaccurate completion of issues. And those are two completely unrelated issues. So if there are offense taken by my use of the word, I, there just shouldn't have been offense taken by it. I do also want to echo the words of Mr. Bocham. Welcome to our new council members. Looking forward to working with you. I'm grateful to see a little bit more diversity. Looking forward to the work that gets done. I also echoed the sentiments of Mr. Nichols. It would be great if the council had a vision for what the city is looking forward to in the next century. Things have drastically changed. The world is evolving. What does Laverne look like? What does Mayberry look like in the 21st century? I think there needs to be a vision and some actual steps to make sure that we're headed in that direction. Coming from the dais, not necessarily just from staff. So welcome, council members. Good night, everybody.
I invited the other person in, but they not do accept. We will give them, should I put on the Jeopardy music? Let's try it twice. We're going to give this last call first. I haven't seen him before. I'd like to hear what he had to say. For another day. Can we please contact them tomorrow and get the information they want so we can send out the council?
We have their registration.
Okay. Could you get that to council, please, so we make sure they get it?
We've got one last, one more.
Valerie, please.
Good evening. Can you help me? This is Darien Munoz.
Yes.
Hello?
We got a picture too.
We got you.
I hear an echo. My apologies. Hi, good evening. My name is Darien Munoz. Mayor Protam for the city of Uvalde. First of all, I just want to thank all of the new council members you've been appointed and to nice meeting and such an incredible meeting so far. First, I just wanted to introduce myself as councillor for Zalea Quintero. I'm also a representative of the San Gabriel Water Quality Authority, representing cities without company rights. I wanted to invite you to join me for a tour breaking of the ground for cleanup activities in San Gabriel Basin. Tours are around ninety minutes in length. They're at your leisure and your convenience. And I just talked to them about the cleanup water report and cost here and the importance that we have planned with our constituents here of the basin. San Gabriel Water Quality Authority is a special district created by the State Legislature back in 1992. And the plan was to facilitate cleanup efforts. A lot of people don't realize that the basin here in San Gabriel Valley has around one hundred sixty square miles and approximately folds around eight point six million acres in drinking water, which will serve approximately one point four million in the San Gabriel Valley. We're one of the largest superfund sites in the nation with over five hundred million dollars in settlements that we have to see to clean up our basin. And that is paid for by federal funding and non-deductible parties. So our goal is to ensure that we keep our ratepayers from not being totally charged for any cleanup effort. I emailed the city clerk some information with my direct contact, and I hope to hear from the chief of management so I can serve the tour. We would love to help you at the Water Quality Authority. Thank you so much.
How are you? Okay. We're moving up to the dais. Council comments, Owee.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just a moment. I just want to, this was a very complex agenda to put this together with all the elements that were included, and for the swearing-in, the outgoing council, plus the items that were here. And I think Luffy Astraea and Deborah Fritz are offered, should be provided with a little bit of things for the work and the effort that it did in putting them together.
You're taking my thunder, but that's okay. Go ahead.
Sorry, then I will leave it to you. My apologies. Go right ahead. You're not going to have to hold for a second. There you go.
I just want to say that this agenda here doesn't come together with just one individual. And I want to say that there's contracts, there's details, there's employment contracts, there's salary adjustments, there's just a multitude of agreements that Luffy and Deborah put this stuff together. But every single member of the staff of Mr. Rusty's is involved with this, and this takes a lot of hours and efforts. And not only that, as the mayor, that I'm, they actually could call me inquisitive. I ask many questions, and those questions are answered, and generally in the fashion that are acceptable, which is most of the time, which has to do with contracts, which has to do with labor increases, rates increases, making sure that our salary charts are showing before and after, things of that sort, that our residents get the information and compare. And they do an amazing job. Yes, they're employees. Yes, that's what you get paid for. But like Luffy and Deborah go above and beyond the call of duty, and every other member, Assistant City Manager, Mr. Rusty, our chief, our Chief of Police, our Community Services Manager, Community Development Director. Everyone in this city works hard. But these things don't come to us without a lot of work. And they answer the questions, and yes, we drive them crazy. I can tell you right now, I drive every one of the directors crazy. But there are questions that, as a resident, I want to know for you guys. And if I'm not comfortable with it, then we go to the next step and find out what the issue was, and make sure that you get the right information. So I think, thank you, they go above and beyond, and especially Deborah. I think Luffy's still back there, isn't she? She is? Yeah. She's eating pizza. Anyway, I guess, we're on public comment. How's the comments? I'm just gonna, I'll just finish it. I want to say that I restarted. I might as well finish. Sorry, guys. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate my support. I appreciate you putting me on as mayor. But also the fact that we've got a lot of work to do. We're not done yet. We're going to have a new city manager. Bob's going to be leaving us. Again, thank you to Mayor and Robin. Excellent job. I really appreciate serving with you guys and working with you. Wasn't always perfect, but we got the job done, and our city's a much better place because of your efforts. Bob, same as you. I know we'll have time to comment. But I welcome Mr. Asha Aguita, and I welcome Mr. Johnson, not strangers. And I welcome Weddy Lau and Rick Crosby. You've got, you don't have a new position, but he's got a new seat over here. Yeah, there'll be plenty of rotation here. But I'm looking very forward to this. I'm looking very forward to the next number of years. We've got a lot of challenges, but our city's healthy because of our previous council and what we've done. And I think we're going to move forward in a very good fashion. Everybody just be safe out there. And Mr. Nichols, thank you. I don't usually comment, but as a city, we have a lot of things in place. Obviously, all of us can always do better, especially after the situation in Uvalde. But we have things in place for our safety of our residents and in our schools that are probably better than most. But again, we should always review those, and you're right. We should always review those, and we can always probably be better to make sure we're even safer. But thank you for your points. I do appreciate that. And I know you're with the longer, you can come to any meeting, you can tell us. But I think the staff got it, and I'm sure the police chief's listening, our fire chief. And thank you. Council, who wants to start? Turn it on?
Yeah, turn it on. Okay. I'm, like I said, I'm glad to be back on the dais. There are issues that I want to see get followed through with, and I won't let up. But again, I just want to thank residents who elected me, and I'm here to do your bidding. And my phone number and email will be available on the city's website. So please, if you have a concern, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Cash.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I appreciate you. I look forward to serving our city. I also look forward to, Mr. Nichols, I have, public safety is very important to me. I lived my entire life, and I understand a comprehensive reviews. I'm looking forward to maybe creating a public safety committee like other cities have, and getting people together, all as one, working as a village, because this is what it takes. I can't figure this out myself, so I do need your help. Get some input, how we can get better, how we can keep you safe. I can't protect everybody at all times, but you know, if we all can get together, figure out how we can respond to the next COVID situation that might happen to us, or a big fire, whatever we could do utilizing means of communication. I'm open for it. I'm always open for a cup of coffee. I'm always open. Just let me know. Please let me know. I appreciate you, and I understand that. I wrote down several things. At the end of the day, I don't see anything as really negative. I see it as frustration, but I also see it as an opportunity to have an open-minded communication, but let there be an open-minded communication. Don't shut me down. I don't shut you down. Ah, big skin. So let's talk about it, how we can get there together. No problem. And water under the bridge. Life is too short, so let's work together.
Councilmember Cash, Luffy just told me that she appreciates my comments, but she wishes she had pizza because she's hungry, so you might want to hurry up.
I'm sorry, Luffy.
Sorry, Luffy.
I apologize, please.
You can count on it.
Thank you. Oh, please, again, I'm always available.
I get to say thank you, Councilmember Cash. Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Now, Councilmember Lau.
Thank you. Just really quick, I moved a minute since we've all been in this room together, so I'll make it quick. But I did want to extend a big thank you to everybody who made this year's Fourth of July celebration a success. And that would not have happened without our fire, our police, our facilities, our maintenance crews, you know, our staff, our Fourth of July committee. They put a lot of work into that. Also, if you're ever interested in the band, which was new this year because our old band is retiring, a lot of my blanking on the name.
Answer.
Thank you. I was like, thank you.
You want the answer?
Yes, yes. So thank you to all, all of those that made it possible. If you are interested in participating in things like that, please don't hesitate to ask because you can participate in things like the Fourth of July committee. Also, just wanted to reiterate the comments that were made at the top, which was, I feel, a long time ago, but Laverne Little League, it is amazing that we have both boys baseball and girls softball advancing. That's a pretty big deal. And I don't have kids, but I have lots of friends with kids. And one of those kids is going to play in Oakland on Friday. And it is no, it's not lost on me how much is work that parents have to do to make these things happen for their kids. And not everybody is so lucky or so privileged to be able to juggle, you know, their work schedule, their cars, you know, how am I going to get my kid there? Are we going to pay for the hotel once we get there, you know, all of these things? So as the mayor indicated, if you have five dollars, ten dollars, please consider donating to Laverne Little League so that the kids can get there and some of the burden can be relieved from the families, especially those that may not have the means to do so on their own. I think the other thing is, if you can't give money, maybe it's your neighbor, maybe you watch their dog while they're away, taking their kids to, you know, this tournament, or to the championship game. So just something to think about. The other thing is, we've had our first in-person Cassie meeting, I have a call, two weeks ago, on a bit. And so it was really nice to be able to see everybody. Those are open and welcome to everyone as well, so please feel free. But there are lots of ways to get involved. I love seeing everyone here, but I don't want people to think that this is the only way to get involved because everybody's got their individuals and everything else. So that is all for me. Be kind, be safe, and have a good rest of your week.
Thank you, Councilmember Lau. One quick go back. As Councilwoman Lau stated, the boys and girls are separate, obviously, so they're separate book on the pages. So be sure, if you're going to do that, make sure you get on the site. On number two, the fireworks were amazing. The band, the fireworks were amazing, honestly. One of the best fireworks I've ever seen, and that's far done. So Councilwoman Carter, Councilwoman Lau, band and fireworks, awesome. They were awesome, so thank you. Mr. Crosby.
Yeah, so we still have our eleven and under boys still playing. They've not, they're in the regionals right now as well. Fourth of July was awesome. Last weekend, I got to honor Autism Spectrum Athletics. They've been around for ten years. Their motto is where awesome and amazing happen. So we got to, they had their ten-year anniversary party at the Laverne Pool, and it was just an amazing time. We had from Carter's office, from Portino's office, and Holden's office recognizing them for their work. Manny Zapata is the lead in of that league, and it's just been thousands of autistic kids going through their last ten years, and it was just a great event to be at. There are a couple of things on the agenda tonight I want to make sure and highlight. Jesse Duff, thank you and welcome.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you coming and stepping up. We also passed two great things for our safety. A reserve, purchased a reserved ladder truck and our license plate reader for our Laverne PD. Those two things are going to help and make sure our city is safe. So really appreciate that. Welcome, Councilmember, I'm going to say, no, no, I will not do that because it is your name from your father that will always make sure you that. Mr. Cash Aguita.
Yes.
Yes. And Councilmember Johnson. Welcome to the council and appreciate you two being, to be on this council. The mayor has given the honor to adjourn our meeting. We're going to come back next Monday at 6:30 for a presentation of the Fire Department's standard coverage and community risk assessment by consultant. So next Monday, July 25th, 2022, at 6:30 PM. And what to adjourn our meeting? Councilmember Carter and I got to go to a memorial service last Saturday to a San Gabriel Valley icon. The council member, Mayor Protam, passing of Duarte is Zaido Praskarachi. She was elected in office in 2001 and served in Duarte as the mayor four times in 2006, 2011, 2015, and 2019. She was the first Filipino-American elected city council and became the longest city United States Filipino-American municipal elected official in office. She was a trailblazer and a community leader as she was elected by her colleagues to the National League of Cities Board of Directors, as well as the League of California Cities Board and President of the Asian Pacific American Municipal Officials. One of her proudest accomplishments was initiating the mayor's youth council to help students become familiar with engaged with government. She's inspiration to all the people in San Gabriel Valley and the Filipino-American community. Our deepest condolences from Laverne to the Praskarachi family and the city of Duarte for their loss. And so thank you so much, and I appreciate all of you guys tonight.
Channel six. Thank you, everybody.
I would have died because I was standing over there talking to the horse.